Medical City, so six years ago, the Medical City was a cow pasture and a vision. And through great collaboration and cooperation with so many partners, it has blossomed into a one-of-a-kind economic engine for our community. There's been a lot of things that have happened this year. In March, I attended the grand opening of the Translational Research Institute, which is a partnership between Florida Hospital and the Sanford-Burnham. In August, the UCF Medical School welcomed a new class of 100 students and will graduate its first class this coming spring. Last month, we celebrated the grand opening of the Valencia-Lake Nona Campus, a beautiful architectural building. And today, Nemours Children's Hospital will begin treating patients. So, the estimate is that the cluster will create more than 30,000 jobs and have a 10-year impact of $8 billion. So, today, we're going to hear from Jim Zaborel, the President of Lake Nona Property Holdings, Dr. Thad Seymour, President of Lake Nona Institute, and Dr. Dan Kelly, who is the Scientific Director for the Sanford-Burnham. Jim, are you first up?
I am. Good morning, Mayor, and fellow Commissioners. Very nice to see you this morning. Mayor, I appreciate the opening remarks and echo a number of your thoughts over time about how this project started, you know, long ago, and it was the city who came out and invested in infrastructure and bought into a vision with us. And, you know, those seeds that were planted are now beginning to bear some fruit. So, you know, with that, I have a development update to give you, but I want to just take a minute and walk down memory lane only because, you know, we look at this as, this is really a marathon, it's not a sprint. And we know you all understand and recognize that in your role. I mean, we're just a small portion of the city, and so many things that we do just take a long amount of time to implement. So, you know, it was back in '86, actually, that the Lake Nona Golf and Country Club actually started. It was '96 when the club was acquired by Mr. Lewis, and with it came a little bit of extra land that he wasn't sure what he was going to do with that now has actually been transformed into this Medical City. In '98, we began the development of North Lake Park. In '99 is when we opened the YMCA school there, the Joint Use Facility that's been a hallmark of that North Lake Park community. March of 2000, we won an ULI Award for that community. 2004, March was our first Tavistock Cup, which is a big event for us that continues to expand as we bring in more teams. I believe we have six teams this year for that event, which shows should be, although it's over at Owlworth, I'm very comfortable with Lake Nona's team again this year. It was April of 2004 that we began on the Village Walk community, about a 1,400-unit community that's in the central part of Lake Nona. It was October of '05 when we announced the UCF plans to begin with their 50-acre campus and the medical school. August '06, when Burnham joined us and announced that they've decided to come to Lake Nona. March '07, when the VA announced that they were coming to Lake Nona. October '07, when we started the construction of the UCF Health Sciences Campus. January '08, when Nemours announced that they were coming to Lake Nona. And as you said, Mayor, they opened today, which is a huge milestone for us and for central Florida. May '09, when Sanford-Burnham opened its doors. February '09, when Nemours and VA commenced construction. August 10 is when the medical school opened. And then recently, we had a grand opening for Lorient Park, our new community there. And Mayor, as you said, we also have recently opened the new campus for Valencia and also UF. So, it's been a long road, but it's been a good road, and we're really, like I said, starting to see some of the fruits of our joint efforts. So, when we look at Lake Nona, we kind of break it up into a number of different areas that we focus on, and we do this and we execute plans across all of these different segments. We're going to have some update today from our Medical City partner in the Burnham, and Thad Seymour is going to give you a little bit of information on Medical City. I'm going to talk a bit about the commercial and the housing piece and the education. I have a map in front of us so we can kind of follow that, but we kind of think of Lake Nona as broken up into three segments: the north segment, which is above the lakes, the central segment, and then the south segment, which is the Medical City. The Medical City is what's taken a lot of attention in the recent years, but, you know, we do have probably almost 8,000 acres there in total when we consider the 7,000 acres in Lake Nona, and then another 1,000 acres of land that's contiguous. So, the Medical City is very important to us, but we also have these other elements. This is a view of the Medical City kind of from the south and west looking east. You see our array of current partners there from sort of starting on the left, Nemours, and then there's a town center, which I'm going to tell you a little bit about, University of Florida on the bottom, Sanford-Burnham to the right, the College of Medicine sort of in the middle, the VA, and then Lorient Park, and then a number of schools that have lined along Narcoucy Road with the recent opening of the Lake Nona Middle School, the Lake Nona High School, which is, I think, in its third year, maybe third, fourth year, and then the Valencia that just opened. Here's a view looking to the north. This is, it's probably hard to see a little bit on your monitor, but it's kind of cool because you can see Lake Nona, and then you see the airport, and then right in the background you see the downtown skyline, and it's actually kind of, it's a lot closer than we think. So, this is the UCF's medical school building. As you said, Mayor, they're going to graduate their first class this year. They just recently published some results from their students, and it was amazing what they've done in terms of their ability to outperform their peers and really take medical education to a new level, and we're very excited for them. The Burnham, Sanford-Burnham, which you're going to get a little bit of an update from with Dr. Kelly in a few minutes. University of Florida, this building just recently opened. I hope you all can come out for a tour of that. It's a really cool facility. It went up without a lot of fanfare and is very impressive. This is Nemours Children's Hospital, like you said, that opens today. They spent close to $400 million on this project, and it really is, it's really a phenomenal facility. I hope you all also get a chance to tour that. This is an actual picture of it at night. They have fiber optic lights in the various rooms, and so the patients can actually choose the color of their room by the lighting that they select. It's just, it's really first-class in so many ways. The VA Medical Center, the big 1.3 million square foot facility that should open by around this time next year. There's a view of it from an aerial view. Middle School, which I mentioned, opened this fall. The high school, it's been open for a number of years now. There's the Valencia Building that they just opened for their first classes. And then the housing, kind of where we sit right now. We have three active communities in addition to the Lake Nona Golf and Country Club. Lake Nona Golf and Country Club continues to have homes for sale. We also have opened up in North Lake Park, a section on the western side of North Lake Park. We have an active community in the central called the Village Walk at Lake Nona, and then we have Lorient Park, our newest community that sits down by the Medical City. You know, as it relates to housing, really, our strategy is to offer, you know, multiple housing types across multiple price points, and we're very excited to finally get our first rental apartment project actually commenced, and it commenced last week. This is a cool shot because it shows Lorient Park on September 9th last year, and then this is the same shot on September 12th of this year. So, I think that's kind of cool, the progress that we've made there. And we now have, I think, somewhere around 40 families that live there.
Did the red house sell?
The red house sold, yes. The red house has been quite controversial. You either love it or you don't, but it's created quite a buzz. The red house sold. David Weekly Homes, who said, you know, "Gosh, what are you doing with this red house?" Because it wasn't theirs originally, now has three red houses themselves. So, anyway, so the red house sold, and it's been, it's been a really interesting project, and we're getting a lot of, a lot of great feedback from the families there. You know, interestingly, about 55% of the people moving there really don't have anything to do with Medical City. There's a big portion of them that work, you know, at the airport. There's a big portion that work even downtown. And so, where we thought we were going to get, you know, a vast majority of those folks that would be commuting right next door, our initial response is about half and half. We also have found that some of them have just bought these homes because of our technology package. We offer a really robust internet technology package, and some of them are telecommuters and working from home. Some shots of Lorient Park. This is our Village Center that we're getting ready to break ground on. It's got a restaurant, a sales center, a multipurpose room that will be used for fitness and aerobics, and a fitness center, and then a big aquatic complex. These are the apartments that I just mentioned that we just broke ground on last week. We spent some time in securing the HUD financing for this project, but we got that behind us, and we are now building and expecting to have units occupied by this time next year. It's 278 units, and it sits right at the northeast quadrant of the Lake Nona Boulevard interchange in 417. This is a new Publix that we're getting ready to open. It's a public shopping center with about 15,000 square feet of attached retail. Publix is planning on being open for Thanksgiving, and we're just doing the final completion right now and punch-out items. This is down on the southeast corner of the project on Narcoucy Road, right next to the middle school you see there on the north part of the picture. Okay, so this is our town center. We have been talking for some time about an outdoor town center that we wanted to locate right across the street from UCF. We have been working on that. The anchor tenants have become re-engaged, you know, as we all know, we've gone through this big real estate reset, but it's good to know that the anchors are back in business and we're back talking to them. We're targeting 2015 right now for the large part of the mall, but we're moving forward right now with what we're calling our Phase 1 area, which is, it's right between Lorient, I'm sorry, right between Veterans and Tavistock Lakes Parkway. And what we have there is we have two hotels and some attached retail, some restaurants. We're in design on this right now, and we hope to have ground broken early next year. This is really part of a bigger project that we're doing, which is really a concentration of development around Tavistock Lakes Boulevard and Lake Nona Boulevard. You can kind of see the hotels on the left-hand side of the screen there. Across the street from that, we have a 60,000-square-foot office building that we're working on, and then north of that, we have another multifamily complex. So, we're trying to build out that whole intersection there and have kind of a completed mixed-use development that sits there. Office Park, some of you may or may not know that Lake Nona has a large entitlement for office, and I think one of our, one of our big visions as we move forward, and nothing, you know, nothing against or competitive with Medical City, but in addition to Medical City and the medical office that will develop there, we see this great Office Park potential and the ability really to tie in an Office Park with the airport and everything that's happening there. So, towards that, we're working on our first phase right now of the office building, which is really, of the Office Park, which is really set up for large, single-use office tenants. And so, we are very encouraged. In the last, in the last probably four months or so, we've responded to a number of RFPs' requests for proposals for tenants that are seeking space, and we probably have seen, I don't know, let's say, half dozen deals in the last four months or so, and I could say that two years before that, we saw zero. So, you know, we're really starting to see some activity as single tenant users are coming forth. And so, our plan here is to have this on the shelf, ready to go for a large user. This could be anywhere from 200,000 to 600,000 square feet in a single campus, and like I mentioned, we're going through the design and pre-development process right now. It's a conceptual rendering of that. So, this is, these are the numbers. These are the numbers that were originally created back in 2006 when we did our first study and talked about the cluster. They were revised when we were successful in bringing forth the VA, and they were updated by Arjuin. And kind of, we've done a snapshot of where we believe we are today based upon the current commitments in place. The original studies talked about a whole cluster and a whole bunch of development to occur over a number of years. What we've done is we said, okay, great, given who we have now with the Burnham, the VA, Nemours, UF, Valencia, UCF, et cetera, where are we? And that's the 16,000 jobs and the 1.5 billion of wages. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Thad Seymour, and I'm happy to answer any questions, maybe after Thad's presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jim. Welcome, Thad.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. Thrilled to be here to give you a little bit of an update. And what I'll do is compliment what Jim has described in terms of the steady, long-term, but very encouraging progress over the last several years on the physical place that we're building. And I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about the strategy of the Medical City, the Life Sciences Cluster that we're building. And let me, like Jim did, sort of do a little bit of a reset, go back to some things we've probably talked about before. But at the very core of our strategy is to build a cluster that contains all four of these elements. And we come to this having studied great Life Sciences clusters around the world. Every one of them has exceptional research with multiple institutions. Every one of them is anchored by a top-quality medical school. Each one of them has multiple clinical providers, providing top-quality health care. And then the fourth piece of this is the, what ultimately will bring the biggest economic impact to a region, and that's the commercial part of this. And it doesn't refer so much to things like the town center, as Jim was talking about, but more about the medical device, the biotech drug development companies, those kinds of things that really come out of the other three parts of the pie. So, our focus is on doing all four of these exceptionally well, and we've studied places like San Diego that did a very good job at taking a research foundation and commercializing that and building tens of thousands of jobs and billions of dollars of economic impact in building one of the great biomedical, biotech clusters. Or Houston, which also has all four, but is more of a clinical destination. Again, a great example and a real boon to that region. Boston and San Francisco and a number of others are much more balanced, but the consistent theme in all of these is, we have to do all of these well. We can't just pick one. We can't just be a clinical center or just do research or just focus on a medical school and nothing else. It's the combination of all those things working together. And so, that's really where, what drives us. As we get going, we're heavier on clinical. We have a couple of good-sized hospitals, particularly after today, and then a year from now when the VA opens. And we're light on commerce. That's really, that evolves, to Jim's point about marathon, not a sprint. The others have to mature a bit before we really build scale in the commercial side of things. But over time, the pie grows, the mix changes, and we don't know exactly what that balance will be, but doing all four of those really well. And if we look even around the state in other places where the state made bets on biomedical research institutes and trying to create that foundation, I think it's safe to say that we in Orlando have made the greatest leap forward in terms of building the robust cluster that you need to make this successful. Others are doing that, but more slowly, and we hope they all do it well because that will help the state, but we're pleased with how that's developing so far. And the reason this is important, as we think about this over time, is that there is a natural sequence to the economic path and the value-creation path. It starts with great institutions, and we're very fortunate to have the mix we have and will continue to add to those. But at the end of the day, all of this is about talent, about attracting talent, and then over time, organically developing that talent here so the really bright kids don't go away to other states to move to San Francisco or to Boston, but rather they want to stay here. And so, that's the, that's the focus we have. And if you read the Sentinel this morning about Nemours, one of the great things that Lane Donnelly, the Chief Medical Officer, pointed to was the synergy of the cluster that attracted top talent, and that's what we're doing both at Lake Nona and frankly throughout the entire region. The reason this is important on the research side is it's the top talent, as you'll hear from Dr. Kelly, that attracts the grant funding. You've got to have the best scientists. If you don't, if you have B-scientists, you don't get the grants in an increasingly competitive world. And then that prevents you from advancing discoveries, some of which can spin out into small companies, and then others, some of those become big companies. And that's where you get this economic engine and this driver. This is what we're really focused on. We have a deliberate strategy with our partners to help move this as fast as we can possibly move it. There are some gates to this. Some things can't move. There is a sequence, and there are some gates to it, but our job is how do we make this move faster? And all the things on the bottom are those enablers that we spend a lot of time on. And I circled this section because this is really the next 10 years for us. We have this foundation, but how do we really get good at building these and attracting these smaller and mid-sized companies and turning those into big job generators, which ultimately produce products and services that benefit patients in the region and beyond? So, one of the ways we're doing this, and one of the ways the city has been enormously helpful to us, is in planning our first facility that will focus on helping those young companies thrive. So, we're in planning right now, something we had set aside for a little while in the downturn, but have now resurrected with a real passion, is to build our first innovation center. There will have a series of these over time that will go right across the street, on the parcel right across the street from Sanford-Burnham and UF, which really we think of as ground zero for our commercialization engine that we're, that we're building. And we're still working on design, but we'll have a facility that will look something like this, current plan, this three stories, 90,000 square feet roughly, a mix of lab and non-lab space, but really focused on how do you accelerate innovation of young, promising ideas and technologies? And the reason the city has been enormously helpful with the state is that we were successful this year in getting state funding for $5 million, $5 million that is funding what we created, which is called the Central Florida Life Sciences Incubator Consortium. And it will take that $5 million and apply it in two places to help solve a real need we have in the region for life sciences, wet lab incubator space. And half of that money will be allocated to building one of those at Lake Nona and the other two health village at Florida Hospital downtown. And we think we'll go from, we're excited because we'll go from no space that helps these young companies thrive to two nice facilities that will help those happen much faster. And that allows us to do two things that's very tough to do right now. One is to spin out companies from places like Sanford-Burnham or UF or UCF, and also to attract young companies who are looking for a place to land. So, in our case, if we have a building right across the street from Sanford-Burnham, and you can encourage collaboration among the scientists and the entrepreneurs, we're much more likely to build those companies to the next level, attract venture capital, helps them grow further, creates jobs, and these are, these are the kinds of jobs that we all want to have in the region. So, we're very excited about this, and this is something we're going to be investing a lot of time and energy in the years ahead. And I will, I'll just close on that to recognize that if you look at examples like San Diego, they all had the foundations that we've created, but if you go and count up the jobs in those regions, it's actually in the commercial entities. It's in the biotech companies. It's in the medical device companies and healthcare IT and healthcare services businesses. So, this sort of seed funding and the incubator and other efforts to allow that to happen and to build this ecosystem of innovation is really important because that's where the economic impact is going to come. I want to mention something we've talked about, I think, with many of you before, but we think is really important to executing on a vision of this scale, and that is, this is much bigger than one organization or one group of small people, one small group of people. And so, we've worked very hard from the very beginning to create this culture of collaboration among our partners, and we put in place actually a loose structure that we found to be very effective, and we simply call them our councils. We have, for example, a leadership council represented in the middle. It is the leaders of each of our anchor institutions at Lake Nona. We meet on a regular basis. We had dinner last night at Nemours last week, I mean, to talk about through long-range, blue-sky strategy. Where do we take this together? How do we help each other be more successful? And because that's worked well, we created a set of other councils, and you can see them, examples of those listed here. I'll highlight in the lower-left the Information Technology Council. This is a group that meets on a regular basis, monthly, and has helped us plan a technology infrastructure that's second to none. And we had the benefit of the CIOs of these major institutions coming together, getting their experience applied to help us define a foundation, which I'll tell you about in a second, that we think will make us extremely competitive with the rest of the world in attracting top companies and talent. In fact, as we did this, we thought this was pretty normal, and so we worked at it, but we found that as people started to come and visit us, it turned out it was actually highly unusual. And so, just this week, Harvard is publishing a business school case. If those of you have been to business school or have colleagues or kids who have done that, a lot of the case method is often used where you take a business problem or an opportunity and try to solve it. So, Harvard Professor Amy Edmondson came and brought her team down and studied what we were doing, and has just published a case entitled "Designing a Culture of Collaboration at Lake Nona Medical City." And this will be available online on the Harvard Business School website as of today. So, that's a, I think, a good recognition that we're doing some things that maybe others would like to emulate. And one other thing we're, I guess I lost something there, but the, I mentioned that we think is fundamentally important to building this economic innovation ecosystem is technology. And this is a kind of a long quote, but the last paragraph highlights what we think is most important. If you look historically, in the 1800s, it was water and raw materials that really drove, were the economic drivers. In the 1900s, it was power and transit. And in this century, it really becomes bandwidth and intellectual capital. How do you take advantage of technology and people's minds in new and different ways? And how do you create a place that does that? And so, we think creating that foundation is really important. And so, with the help of our IT council, and in fact, ultimately with the creation of a joint venture technology company, we've put in place a fiber and now a mobile access network within Lake Nona that is second to none, gives us capacity not only to do the things well that our institutions are doing today, but more importantly, to help them think about what do we want to be doing 10 years from now, 25 years from now, 50 years from now? And we've laid in an infrastructure at the time that is most cost-effective and most sensible to allow for unlimited possibilities. But we went beyond the Medical City and the partners represented here because as we thought about this, we believe that one of the opportunities we have is to think about this not just as a research or a commercial core, but as an entire community. And so, we got looking at what was happening around the world, and this frankly, this slide scared us. And we realized if Mr. Friedman is right about bandwidth being important to competitiveness, and we're this far down the pecking order, we've got to change that. So, as we, and this represents actually residential connection speeds in these different countries. So, we took that and we turned it on its side, and what we did was, we decided in our new Lorient Park neighborhood, the base package that you would get is 100 megabits a second, which is, depending on what you've got, five to 10 times faster than most service providers offered. And you can get that along with digital TV for $69 a month, roughly. But if you want to upgrade to $199 a month, you can get gigabit service. And if you've read about what Google is doing in Kansas City, this is really the same, same thing. They hope to deploy that later this year. We've had this live since January. So, it's the sort of thing that we can do because we're planning long-term and we're taking the time to do it right, but also investing early enough when it's cost-effective to allow that to make that happen. And we don't know what this leads to. We do know it's important, and we're counting on the next generation to come in and figure out how do we take advantage of this, whether it's in new modes of education or different kinds of care delivery, and we'll just, we'll figure out together where that's going to go. But as Jim said, we're already finding it's a real attractor to the new neighborhoods. We think it will be a way to put Orlando on the map in new ways, and we're very excited about what that's, where that's going to take us. Mayor Dyer introduced me as the President of the Lake Nona Institute, which is one of the hats I wear, and this is a venture or an organization we put together about two years ago, to really focus on the things, not the physical place, but what makes this community and this cluster we're building unique and differentiated, and how can we do things here and help other communities learn from those experiences? And so, you can, you can read the vision of what we're doing, but we have a particular focus on those three blocks of health and wellness, education, and sustainability. And those inform us in so many ways in terms of the planning we're doing of the physical place as well as the culture that we're trying to build at Lake Nona. And we're attracting through that incredible partners who know a lot about these areas more than we do to help us think about how do we do that better. And let me close with something that is, well, let me flip through this quickly. These are some of the things we're doing through the Institute in terms of engaging with the community. The Institute is partnering with several organizations you'll hear more about later this week to undertake significant research projects. And then, we think an important role that the Institute can play is as a convener, as a knowledge gatherer and sharer, and do that through events. And in fact, this week, starting tomorrow evening, we're doing a first of, first ever for us, what we're calling our Lake Nona Impact Forum, and Mayor Dyer will be down tomorrow night to help us kick that off. And this will gather about 125 people, about 100 of them from outside the region, who will come to Lake Nona many for the, most for the first time to experience what's happening and to share their ideas for things we're working on as well as ideas that are of broader import, particularly in the health and healthcare arenas. And the speakers we've attracted, the quality of the delegates has even surpassed our expectations. And so, we think it will be a chance for us to begin to put ourselves on the, on the map at, in places that hadn't heard about what was happening here in Orlando until now, and so this is something that we're very excited about. We'll be making three major announcements over the next two and a half days, which is... We'll be making three major announcements over the next two and a half days, which you should watch for, and I hope will support. I think they'll be good for Lake Nona and for the region, and they're things that we're extremely excited about. So those are a few, a few of the things that we have going, lots more to come, but we can't express enough the appreciation we have for the great support you as a, as a council and as the entire city has given to us. And we're humbly trying to make you proud of what we're doing and hopefully having a huge impact on the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thad. Dr. Kelly?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity for me to present an update. As you've heard of the Medical City Partners, we're the ones that have actually been operating for a while, so what I'm going to do today is briefly bring you through some of the highlights of what we've been able to accomplish and what we seek to do. I should also remind you that in a nutshell, the purpose that we serve among the Medical City Partners is multiple hats, but one of them certainly is a pipeline of discovery that would ultimately move not only to commercialization, but to changing the diseases that afflict us today. We also are in the business of training young scientists, including many who come from the region, and attracting young scientists from other parts of the country. And so that's very important. And importantly, we seek to develop into a world-class site that will be nationally recognized and through that will also provide additional recognition for the region and for the city. So with that as a prelude, just would like to run through a few highlights. So first of all, we opened in April two thousand and nine. We have a beautiful one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot facility, and importantly, it is the largest gold lead independent scientific facility in Florida, so we are environmentally conscious, and that also has received not just statewide, but also national recognition. As you heard, we're part of the Medical City. It's amazing to look at this picture. It's not so old, but the number of things that have already changed over the past six to eight months is really amazing. And if you haven't been down there, certainly you'll probably go down there and, and catch up after all that you've heard from my Tavistock colleagues. The yellow shows where we're at. I should mention a few things. We are developing real partnerships and interactions with each of our, with each of the different partners here. One interesting one is that a number of the physicians who have come into Nemours Hospital are scientists, and a couple of those scientists have set up labs within our building. And so this alone breeds interactions, but there are many other initiatives with each of them. So just to say a few words about what we're actually doing and, and our mission, we've established, as shown in this map, a center focused on the root causes and complications of diabetes and obesity and related metabolic diseases. And this is now one of five centers nationwide for the Sanford-Burnham Medical Research Institute. As you can see, there's four acclaimed centers in California. Our job is to develop expertise and a critical mass in a very important area that I'm going to describe for you over the next few minutes. We are developing expertise in what is referred to as the metabolic origins of disease, and importantly, we are going to be the hub, really the pioneer for this institute, which as you know, is internationally known, for driving clinical research. In other words, this is something new for Sanford-Burnham, but the discoveries that we make in our basic science laboratories and have made for many years at the Sanford-Burnham need to move out. Previously, they were often shipped out through collaboration with companies and what have you. Here, we're establishing, as I'll describe at the end, a new approach to partner with health systems. So we will also, in addition to our diabetes and obesity research, be setting a new plan forward for the institute and really for the nation in how we might interact with regional health systems, our partners, but also the existing regional health systems here downtown. So why obesity and diabetes? I think you probably all know, but it worth just touching on a few things. Obesity is a very important problem. It contributes to many different diseases, the most important of which is type-two diabetes, which is a major cause of death in the United States. Alarmingly, this problem has now spread to the pediatric population. If you go into a pediatric clinic now, especially an endocrinology clinic, whereas before you would see patients with rare diseases, for example, growth problems, what have you, now you see a significant number of obese patients that are developing type-two diabetes, which is the adult form of diabetes. So you can see that we are witnessing a problem that is not going to go away anytime soon because now we have a pediatric input to it as well. You've probably seen maps like this. They're always breathtaking and quite disturbing. These are color-coded maps that are provided to us ongoing from the Centers of Disease Control in Atlanta. And the colors represent the prevalence of obesity over time. This is in nineteen ninety. Look at what has happened over less than a ten-year period. Excuse me. If you look at the colors, you'll see that many states, including Florida, have a prevalence of obesity that's over twenty-five percent of the population, and it's growing, as you can see here. So this is a problem because it drives diabetes, and diabetes is actually a lethal disease, as shown in this graph. This is amazing to me. It's old, but it's still true. Of the four major killers in our country, the only one that has an increase in death rates is actually diabetes. And that's not to say that other problems aren't real and need to be addressed, but this is growing. And the reason that diabetics usually have an early death, it has to do with cardiovascular disease. And this cardiovascular disease, as indicated by the fact that after a heart attack, they do worse than non-diabetics, this is a unique form of heart disease. So we've developed many ways to stem heart disease, as you know, ranging from statins to lower cholesterol, putting stents in vessels, aspirin, you name it. But many of these therapies are not working very well in diabetics. So the mission, one of the missions at our site is to understand the unique aspect of this cardiovascular disease in the diabetic. And in medical schools around the country, there are people studying diabetes, and there's people studying heart disease, but they're not doing it under one roof together. So what we thought we would do is to create an environment where we would have scientists and physicians from academia and from industry who are interested in cardiovascular disease and also interested in obesity and diabetes, and to bring them together. And that is essentially what we've done under one roof in a very collaborative way, in the way that only can be done, in my opinion, right now, in this Sanford-Burnham-type of setting to go on. So what have we done? Just got to run through some things. We're two-thirds of the way towards reaching our faculty recruitment goal of roughly thirty individuals, lead scientists. They come with teams over halfway towards meeting our overall headcount goal, which is roughly about three hundred, will probably go higher than that. We've created high-value jobs paying one hundred and thirty percent average private-sector wage in Orlando and Orange County. Our scientists come from all over. This is perhaps the most exciting aspect for me. We were worried when we came down here, because after all, it is a pasture. There's still cows out there, okay? So we really wanted to make sure that we could bring the very best. Thad touched on this. If we don't bring the very best, we won't be successful in competing. We, as you can see, are recruiting from the very best academic institutions, and in some cases, importantly, from companies. We want to create an atmosphere that is not purely academic, but is a hybrid between a biotech and an academic setting. So we've received over fifty-two million dollars in research grants to date. We've published over one hundred and thirty scientific papers. Over the past year, we published over eighty papers, so it's going up very rapidly. Many contracts, patents, and invention disclosures. And importantly, we are beginning to establish partnerships with companies to, and this is important in many ways. The first is that federal funds for grants right now, although it's still the staple for us, cannot be the only way to support our research, because we're seeing a constraint and reduction because of the budget constraints related to the economy. So we need to diversify the ways that we actually fund our research. But secondly, it's important for the region. This entire Medical City will not only populate through spinoffs, which is really a very difficult thing to do right now, but I'm confident that that will happen, but the partnerships, enduring partnerships with industry will also create inherent spinoffs in their own right. So some of these offices and innovation centers, et cetera, that you see, will probably, if we're successful over the long term, have the Novartis, J&amp;J, and Takeda, Sanford-Burnham and Medical City links within them. This is an example. As you probably know, several years ago, we entered into a very exciting, large agreement with the Japanese pharmaceutical company Takeda to basically develop new approaches to treat obesity. This has gone very well, and we're in the process of renewing this. This reflects something that's interesting. The percentage of total research dollars from outside of Florida has ridden, risen in, by ten percent in one year, not just because of us, but also because of what's happening, I think, down in the Jupiter area, et cetera. So this was a very good investment, we believe. In addition, we've attracted additional state funds that we might not attract otherwise. As you may know, the state of Florida has approved recurring three million dollar annual fund for collaborative research geared towards drug discovery. The hub of this is the Sanford-Burnham site. This program will provide scientists statewide with access to our state-of-the-art technologies for drug discovery. This, in essence, leverages the initial investment for additional investment into the region, and especially now, as you all know, a time when it's difficult to have much money flowing from Tallahassee, we're proud of this. So we're also training tomorrow, tomorrow's scientists. This not only includes our postdoctoral research scientists in our laboratories, but also in the community. We have secured a United Negro College Fund at Sanford-Burnham for four year, for four years, a scholarship that will allow training of individuals who might not otherwise have this opportunity. We contribute to science curricula in local schools. We have clinics, various days for teachers, career days, internships, and summer camps. The last thing that I want to mention has to do with what I mentioned earlier on. The institute, and really for that matter, the scientific national community, is looking as to how we will move our discoveries towards patient care, and we ultimately will do that with partnering with all of the groups in Medical City. But in the meantime, as you may know, we've established a very exciting and, I think, productive partnership. And the reason to do this is to begin to personalize medicine, to take an individual with diabetes and be able to predict who's going to develop heart disease, kidney disease, and to treat it at an early stage with markers that are powerful and predictive. And so we have launched in partnership with Florida Hospital, the Translational Research Institute for Metabolism and Diabetes. This is called the TRI. Mayor had mentioned this. This is on Princeton. You've probably seen it. It's a beautiful facility. It's a one-of-a-kind facility that basically takes first in human trials, including many discoveries from our site in the region, and to try them and test them and validate them in humans. Two examples of that, Dev Sichter at our site has, has identified a hormone that is secreted by the brain that acts on fat tissue to melt it away, if you will. We'd like to harness the power of this hormone, and studies in TRI are being done. TRI is amazing because they can put people into these rooms for twenty-four hours or longer and measure every aspect of their energy expenditure, body composition, to see if things like orexin, this hormone, actually have an impact. And then, if so, the companies that we collaborate with will become very involved. Sheila Collins, another scientist at our site, made an amazing discovery that the heart itself elaborates a hormone that talks to fat tissue and also reduces the amount of fat by turning it into brown fat, the good fat, okay? And so this is, these studies are also being planned at the TRI, just a little snippet of where we're going. So in closing, Sanford-Burnham Medical Research Institute wishes to express our profound gratitude to the city of Orlando. The mayor has been extraordinarily supportive, as have the commissioners. We're excited about the future. We will work very hard to make you proud. And with that, stop and happy to answer questions. I'm sure that my colleagues would too.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's a wonderful presentation. Jim, I do have a question. Back on the estimate of jobs created to date, did, do you guys have a summary of that somewhere that you can provide us with? And then, I don't remember how many, sixteen thousand, is that right? Do you have an idea of how many were hired locally? I know the research scientists that we want, that Dr. Kelly's talking about, we need to recruit from around the country, but I was just wondering whether we have been able to hire people locally.
Let me, I, I don't have those stats at my fingertips, but let me do a little research and put something together for you, Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to be able to talk on the, you know, on the, the economic side of this whenever I'm out in the community, so if you can give me some facts and figures that I can use, I'd be glad.
Happy to do that.
Okay. I think it was Commissioner Rings and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, gentlemen. You know, I just want to say that this was a fantastic, just wonderful, perfect presentation, and I really appreciate everyone's enthusiasm, the energy and the passion that you presented here today. And, you know, really, after you finished this presentation, it was as if we all should have stood up in here and gave them a standing ovation, because you guys have really put together a great presentation, and you're representing the area so very well. And it's good to hear about the facility there on Princeton, because I did have an opportunity to go through and visit that as well. And there's so much things, positive things that are happening as a result of what you're doing. And Tavistock, you guys are just tremendous for really pulling all of this together. And Mayor, if you remember from the very beginning, when you talked about Medical City, I said, hey, look, we got Medical City right here downtown with Orlando Health and Florida Hospital, but the vision was much greater too. And it's not to diminish what's happening with Orlando Health and Florida Hospital, but it's really to accentuate what's going on out at Medical City. And it is something that's just really tremendous. And to get the kind of national and international attention that we're bringing here already means so much. So my, my hats off to you, gentlemen, and thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you very much, and let me echo Commissioner Rings. It's just great when a plan comes together. When we sit on this deal, we don't get a chance to see that often, where we get a chance to be here at the beginning and to get a chance to watch it continue. So congratulations on the work that you're doing. Let me echo what Mayor Dyer has said. Along your economic impacts figures, I guess I have just a couple of questions on that one chart. And I guess I'm trying to understand it. So I've got projected impacts to Orlando by two thousand and seventeen. So I've got projected impacts to Orlando by 2017. So it looks like the projected number of jobs was 30,000, but the jobs will be at 16,000? Or does it look like they will be at 30 and they're at 16 today?
So basically, what we have is we have a projection for where we will be in 2017 based upon the commitments that are in place today.
And that's the 16,000?
That's the 16,000. The other is what the cluster was envisioned to develop when they did the study back in the beginning. So we've sort of said, okay, given, you know, the commitments from the VA, given the commitments from Nemours, all those people in place, where will we be at 2017? And so, you know, to build on the mayor's question a little bit, some of that is projected in terms of where, you know, some of this hiring is going to be because, you know, obviously the VA hasn't opened yet, and that's a big, that's a big chunk of those jobs.
Well, I guess what you're telling me is that it's less than what we had anticipated, but we're still on the track to get to that point, just a little bit later than we thought?
No. I think what I was trying to differentiate between is what the whole projection of the cluster was versus what is in place today. Because the original thing was to look at, okay, so we have this 7,000 acres and we're going to build out, you know, a million square feet of research, we're going to build out a million square feet of office, we're going to build out, you know, 2 million square feet of retail, we're going to build out all this stuff. What's that? And now, and that's sort of out there. And I think there was a timetable that was put on that, maybe, I don't know, 15 years or some, you know, it was a projection over time and it was done at that time. And now what I'm saying is, okay, where are we against that projection? So it's not that we're behind, it's to show, sort of, how we're tracking on that overall number.
Perfect.
Yeah, if we did nothing else, that's where we're, and, you know, as you commented on the energy, I mean, there's a whole group of us down there, and many of them that work in this building that are burning away at this every day. So we hope to be beyond that by 2017.
Well, like Mayor Dyer said, I mean, what we see from this standpoint is much more longer economic impact. That's the role that we play. I'm not sure that I could tell the difference between a common cold and a cut on an arm. I mean, so you guys are just incredible in terms of what you're doing. But from an investment standpoint, this is one of those occasions where we really want to tout to the community that things really are actually happening, they're impacting our community. And you may not see it because you live in North Orlando, you may live in Seminole County, but it's happening, having a real, genuine impact on our community for the long term. And this diversification has to be part of our long-term plan for our community to continue to grow, is what we're doing. I am just so thrilled about what you're doing and look forward to coming down and seeing what you're doing. I've missed a couple of opportunities. I apologize for that.
Well, I'd just like to say what we are doing because everybody in this room has a part of it. And so we are, you know, very humbly standing here, taking some credit for what a whole bunch of people have done. So, so thank you.
Well, we're thrilled and I'm just really excited about it. So thank you very much.
Jim, what do you think the awareness is among the just everyday person of Medical City?
You know, Mayor, I feel like it's building, and that's one of the things behind this Impact Forum that we're doing. I think, you know, our awareness, I think, is pretty good here in central Florida, but even as we get out to Tampa, you know, I mean, there's a lot of folks in Tampa that don't know what we're doing here. And clearly, as we start getting out of the state, there's even lesser awareness. So this, one of the ideas behind this Impact Forum was, you know, not only to bring a bunch of smart people here to have a great conference and to advance, you know, thought leadership along, you know, health and wellness on that platform, but it's also to give them a taste of Orlando, to have them come here and spend time and see what's going on and build that awareness. So when they go back to their home office, wherever that might be, in Boston or overseas for that matter, they bring back the story with them. And, you know, as you know, you travel a fair amount, we never have a problem in saying Orlando and, you know, everybody knowing Orlando. Where we need to continue to build awareness is what else about Orlando? And, you know, we know we're the number-one medical meeting destination, for instance. But we're not known for all these other things. And I think that that's one of the powerful things that can come out of this Impact Forum. And that's one of the powerful things that will come. Some of the announcements we're doing later this week with some of our corporate partners, it's all about getting that message out there and building the awareness. And, you know, I'll say, in the downturn of the last few years, you know, we didn't spend a ton of money on building our awareness because there really wasn't much activity happening. And I think one of the things that we're embarking to do now is, you know, kind of pick ourselves up, dust ourselves off a little bit, and power this forward. And this Impact Forum is a sort of evidence of that, of, again, going back and, you know, we're seeing more commercial activity. You know, I know that, you know, we, quite honestly, I stood up here four years ago and expected and talked about, you know, some of the tax base and that, that has been slow to come as a result of some of these real estate, some of this real estate downturn. But I stand before you today to say, look, we're picking ourselves up from that, we're seeing some good activity, we're seeing a lot of prospects, and it's time to, again, reengage and get all these, you know, smart, energetic people out there talking about what we're doing and selling the story because it's real. And, you know, doesn't take but a quick trip down there to see what's going on at Burnham to just be, you know, in awe, or go to Nemours, or UF, or any of those players, and really see that and hear that passion in these folks. And, you know, many of them are new to the community, which is great. And, you know, but plenty of them are also, you know, longtime residents. So it's really exciting to be a part of it.
We need you to build a couple of things that are a not-for-profit or a government building down there.
So I agree. So I have, I do have apartments coming out of the ground. I have a Publix deal coming out of the ground. I'm going to do a couple hotels. So we got some stuff coming that we can, that we can put on those rolls. I agree with you.
I wanted to ask Dr. Kelly, too. Could you talk about, it looks like you've had a pretty, pretty good recruitment of some wonderful scientists. Do you have any anecdotes on, I don't know what I'm trying to ask here, people that had not been to Orlando that you convinced to come here once they saw what you had going on?
Yeah. So this was a concern of ours early on. And we, by the way, I don't know if you know this, but both mayors have actually helped with some of the higher-level recruitment, which is really amazing to me and was amazing to the people we've recruited. Tim Osborne, we recruited to run our diabetes program. He's internationally known, came out of Brown and Goldstein's lab, who had discovered the statins. And his wife had grown up in California, never left California, except for a little bit when he was in Dallas to do his training. And she said, I'm never leaving California again after that experience. And I called him and he said, well, you know, the only place we could, we could move to is a place that's near an ocean. He said, is there an ocean nearby there somewhere? I said, yeah. So we brought them in. She was, she was very funny about this. There were two things that won them over. She figured out that we're close to the ocean. She had a little geography lesson. But I think more importantly, we had a lunch downtown. Actually, Mayor Dyer came in, a number of our leaders, with Tim and Connie, and that just blew them away. They live now, interestingly enough, towards the coast. He commutes, you know, about 30, 40 minutes in. She's happy. We've also, we recruit a lot from the East Coast, New York City, Boston, especially Boston. And I think the concern there is the, shall we say, relative elitism that exists among the communities at Harvard and in New York City that this would be an intellectual Sahara Desert. So that has also been completely prevented in some respects by, in the early stages, having them meet again with, not just with our scientists, but with the community. Again, these are, as you know, many people here come from Orlando, many people here come from the East Coast and what have you. And this has been, this has been just a wonderful thing. I would say the one issue that we've dealt with that is changing, as you saw by the previous presentation, for those who had, for example, high-school-age kids, et cetera, want a very high-level education and felt more comfortable and established, they tended to gravitate to living in the city. And we wanted more action and more critical mass down near the Medical City, and that is beginning to change. So that's a challenge we've had because when they first come, they believe, well, we're just going to live two miles from work, which was the whole idea. But many of them didn't feel like there was enough critical mass, schools and what have you, developing there. And I think that's changing, but that's been a bit of a challenge, actually.
Okay.
I'd like to mention one other quick thing because you had asked it. It is true that the lead scientists come from all over, but their teams, some of them come down, but many of them are recruited from regional groups. So we don't, we don't drive the numbers of jobs, but we do reflect almost in a microcosm what I think will happen with some of these other areas. We'll bring in, for example, physicians into these hospitals, but their teams will largely be people from around here. And that's great because it will have an impact on jobs and at the same time, will put us on the map because people are coming here. Right now, people know about us up in Harvard and what have you, but we're still providing jobs locally.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And along the lines of what you were talking about, building more attention into Medical City, that's why we are revitalizing the summer corridor so that flow would be there between the city and the medical corridor. But anyhow, and talking along the lines of the ocean, the only thing we're missing in the city of Orlando is a canal to bring ships because everything else we do have. I love the concept of clusters and councils because we do use that example in District 2 to maintain our community together, our businesses and our neighborhood leaders. But Dr. Kelly, the question goes geared towards you and is more on the personal side because I was looking at the presentation and looking at what you guys are studying in terms of the brain and obesity and obesity and whatnot, and how this relates to Alzheimer's?
Yeah.
How, because I see also on the West Side, I was looking at the map of what the Burnham Institute is doing in the different areas of the nation. I do have a particular interest because of my father, and I have often said to him that I'd like to bring him over here because there's a lot being done here in the city of Orlando, so.
This is a great question and a sophisticated question, certainly, because it's the question that's being asked by scientists today. As you may know, there is now evidence that the incidence of Alzheimer's disease in the diabetic population is disproportionately high. This has led to the notion that the metabolic origins of diabetes not only cause heart disease, but lower the threshold for developing Alzheimer's disease. We have recently established a 10-year plan at the institute to find ways to attack problems that are emerging where we have strengths in both coasts. We have a world-renowned neurodegenerative group in La Jolla, and we're developing a world-class group here in metabolism. And one of the few bullet points that we would like to go after, along with Florida Hospital and the TRI, is this very question. Can we develop diagnostic markers? They might even be metabolite markers or something, not always genomic, that would identify the individuals at a very early stage, right when they're diagnosed with diabetes, to see over the next few years if there are indicators to suggest something's going on in the brain and to do intervention studies. So stay tuned on that one. The national scientific community is also very interested in this. The National Institutes of Health have started several different programs to learn more about this and to address it. It's another distressing part, actually, about this obesity epidemic because we're already struggling with Alzheimer's, let alone the fact, just like with the heart disease, we start to gain a foothold on the heart disease and then obesity and diabetes comes along and puts it back up again. And we're worried the same thing could happen with this.
Well, I have heard that Alzheimer's is some sort of diabetes of the brain. And then again, I don't know the particulars, and I was reading a little bit about this and some of the advancements in medicine. And there's ketones found on coconut oil and stuff like that that replaces glucose that would usually be processed by the brain and stuff. And that's when I saw you talking about these issues of the brain, I was wondering, what are we doing locally to address this issue? So I definitely will pay attention.
It's very early stages, but it's an important problem, and we're well-suited to address that.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. That will conclude our workshop for today.